So another comment that has come up, it was discussed a little bit at council is we had a citizen bring up the issue of speeding on Lake Street and we were all puzzling over things that we could do to resolve the issue. And you know, the only real way to address that is to narrow that roadway down so the width, you know, is narrowed and therefore people will slow down. That's been a proven way to address this. So what I've done is I've reached out to the local transportation commission and we have a STIP project, a state transportation, yeah, okay. So we have a state transportation improvement project to do work on Lake Street. And I reached out to Jeff Schwein and I'm trying to amend with his support the STIP application to narrow those roadways, put basically a road diet in place and also to add separated bike lanes on either side. And I think it should sell pretty well with the state. We'll see, I've got to make a presentation to the LTC and with Caltrans District Two. And we'll see what happens. Do you want to hit?
So last council, we were directed to look into the sidewalk ordinance and how we could get some of these sidewalks and things going on. So what I've done is I looked at--
Can your rules are handy?
Yeah, turn my mic on too. There we go. So we were, I looked at Sacramento, Dunsmere, Shasta Lake, their ordinance and stuff like that, and then got in contact with John Kenny. Basically, we don't have to do anything to our ordinance as it's written right now. But what I did come up with is some things that we can do to make it a little more clearer as far as the notifications and stuff. The city manager's looking to get his notice form from Dunsmere so that that can be sent out to the people. But we're pretty good as far as the streets and highway code. It pretty much dictates what the city can do and we can put in the language, but we're just restating what the code says. So what we're going to do is we're going to look into the sections for specifically, it breaks down what the city, what the timeframe is, so a two-week notice to either start or show that they've been completed. And it also gives us, the law actually gives us the language for filing liens on people who don't do our work. So we really don't have to do anything more than just look at what the sections tell us and build the forms to go with them. And the forms are already, for the lien, that just requires a resolution by the city if somebody hasn't paid for it. And the form is actually spelled out in the legislation.
So if I could restate parts of that, you know, a lot of cities have ordinances that parrot California State Street and Highway Code that says that the property owner is responsible for the sidewalk out in front of, you know, that fronts their property. And so the city attorney said that it's probably best not to try to repair it, you know, state laws in ordinance because then if for some reason that law changes, now we're stuck trying to catch up. The, you know, Sacramento has put out a flyer that's, that's pretty good. I used in Dunsmere, I repurposed it, that lays out what property owners' responsibilities are and it's something that when we find a violation that we can go and then deliver those, you know, that flyer to that home. You know, and we're cognizant of certain situations in which, you know, we've stated this before, where if we've got a street tree that we planted at some time in the past that has lateral branches and it's causing heaving and cracking on those sidewalks, then in those situations, we would come up with some, you know, way of cost sharing to make those fixes. So, you know, we're, we're trying to kind of walk the line here. But anyway, so there it is. It's basically what the chief said. I just, I wanted to clarify a couple of things about what the responsibility of the property owner is and how we're going to approach this.
Thank you. Counsel?
Okay, so along those lines, how are we actually going to enforce those very clear codes? Is there going to be someone assigned to do that specifically or will we have to hire someone to do it?
So how it works is it goes through the Public Works Director is actually, or in this case, the Acting Director. They would issue the notice, that's just standardized notice, the language, I believe it's 5613, gives us of the Streets and Highway Code, gives us the language we have to use, the flyers that the city manager was talking about. We mail that to whoever is listed as the property owner. We also provide a postcard and post the property notice on there. Once that is done and certified, then it's just a matter of, they have two weeks to respond, which will all be spelled out on that form. They have two weeks to respond. If they don't, then the city Public Works Director or Acting can then either dictate whether we're going to take over the work or if they've shown proof to him. So it's really, once we put out the notice, which is what we were talking about, then it's going to be on them to show us proof. If they don't show the proof, now we can just go ahead with our, under the code and do the contract work and charge the owner. If the owners don't pay for it, the law will have, now we'll have all the paperwork and documentation for filing the liens and stuff. So hopefully this clarifies everything for us. We'll get the form set up by what the law says and when we go out and we identify a spot that's a problem, Public Works will make the notification.
It says that there are a lot of spots, so we can get started next week on this and just work endlessly for two to three years.
So, you know, the approach here is to start out with the most egregious--
Right.
--code violations and, you know, in, in, in some of those cases, you know, part of the responsibility may be on the city. So, you know, we can't tackle the whole issue at once because it may cost the city quite a bit of money and we need to roll it out, you know, in a kind of uniform fashion, getting the biggest risk issues off the plate.
You mentioned also the city tree issue, which has caused problems for some of the sidewalks. The Active Transportation Committee recommended in its report, its proposed sidewalk, making its plan that as to those portions of the sidewalks, the city ought to fix the sidewalk first, if the city was the one who caused the, the problem to the sidewalk by planting the trees. And then once, once the sidewalk was back in proper condition, then the property owner would be responsible.
So I saw those comments and spoke to Alta and I made adjustments. The city can't afford a wholesale fix, crack sidewalks across the board. If there is an issue, we'll take it on a case-by-case basis on how we'll share those costs. But, you know, we, we plan to own up to what is the city's fault, so.
Any committee updates?
Yes. So the DIAC committee finally met. Couple of things that, there was discussion about the farmer's market and the current location not being ideal with the ongoing issues with an adjacent property owner. And so there's a desire on the part of DIAC to look at Parker Plaza as a potential location. And so, you know, we're looking into it. Public Works is, is going to get back to me with a report. The Flower of Life sculpture, you know, the DIAC is pretty insistent on where they want it located and I understand why, but there's a real issue with that sculpture being hit by a snowplow. And so they've hired a engineering firm to do what they can to make it as snowplow-proof as possible, but we haven't seen the plans and we needed, you know, to take a look at that and see, hey, is this going to work or is it not? And if it looks like it's acceptable, then we need to work on the liability issue if, you know, if something happens and it does get damaged, who's picking that up? So there's that. There was a discussion about bringing muni-meters into the downtown core, which are basically parking meters, glorified electric parking meters that cover six, you know, six to eight stalls, just like we have in larger cities. And, you know, and they didn't come to any conclusion on whether that was a good idea or not. It was a pretty robust discussion about, hey, is this chasing off potential customers or is this a good thing? You know, it, in some ways, it encourages turnover and it does generate new revenue. But, you know, again, we haven't really come to any decision on their part and haven't discussed on whether or not this is a good idea. Finally, the issue of power box art. We have a draft contract with PAC Power that, discussing with their regional representative, Todd Andrews. And, you know, once we get that hammered out, we'll be able to move forward with wrapping some of the power boxes with art. So, and that's basically it.
Going back when, I forgot to mention, under council comments that Councilman Stackfleth and I attended our first LTAC meeting, representative made up of a couple of friends at the library, the two of us, a couple from LTAC and a community person. So we met to discuss the future of the library and the funding and we all came together kind of with the same conclusion. So it should move in a great direction where we've set a meeting to look at some plans and, and start to get this thing moving, so.
What was the conclusion or direction that you all agreed on?
Well, very vaguely at the moment, but just that we are all wanting to see something come out of this and maybe on a smaller scale than, than what, than the big plans had showed, you know, where it came to a halt the first time. So, yeah. Moving on to consent agenda. City manager recommends approval of the following consent agenda items. All resolutions and ordinances on this agenda or added heretofore shall be introduced or adopted as applicable by title only and the full reading thereof is hereby waived. A, approval of minutes, September 26, 2022, regular city council meeting. B, approval of disbursements, accounts payable 10/3/22. Total gross payroll and taxes for period ending 9/18/22. C, committee minutes, downtown enhancement advisory committee, July 13, 2022. And D, adoption of resolution CCR-22--
Thirty-two.
Thirty. Authorizing application for the permanent local housing allocation program, non-entitlement local government competitive component.
Move to approve consent agenda items A through D, D being thirty dash thirty-two, I believe. Right? Thirty dash--
Thirty.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two, yeah. By title only.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And moving on to number eight, review of the draft walk, bike, ride mobility plan. And I will hand it over to Jeff Knowles from Alta Planning.
Great, thank you. Let me show my screen.
Counsel, Mayor, Counsel, it's my pleasure to be with you tonight. My name's Jeff Knowles. I'm with the firm Alta Planning and Design. We are your consultant to prepare the walk, bike, ride Mount Shasta mobility plan. My agenda tonight is to walk you through this plan and share with you kind of the highlights that were included in each chapter, share with you where we're going in terms of next steps and also the comments we received from the public, the planning commission, the technical advisory committee, and then to receive your comments tonight about the plan so that we can make revisions and then bring this back to you for formal action, hopeful adoption on October 24th. So I'm going to walk you through each chapter. The first is on introduction. The second one is about the vision for transportation, active sustainable transportation, Mount Shasta. Third chapter is on community engagement, documenting, community voices that really built this plan. Chapter four is getting around Mount Shasta today, the existing conditions. Five and six are about the recommendations for infrastructure changes, programs and policy ideas. And then six is really about where do you start the implementation strategy for funding and putting it together. And then, of course, there are some appendices materials as well. So chapter one outlines the planning process. This plan is built on four phases of work. The first phase was listen and learn. This kicked off in the winter of 2021. This is where we did a lot of our outreach, listening to business community, to residents, to schools and school-aged children, to seniors. Phase two was building consensus. This happened over the fall and winter of 2022. Phase three happened this spring where we were refining ideas, bringing it back to the public. And then phase four is where we are today, the review period. We looked at relationships to other plans to make sure that we were consistent with county and state policies. We looked at lessons from other peer cities and started to document that together. Chapter two is where we worked with the technical advisory committee and the public to create a vision statement. Surrounded by immense natural beauty and recreational amenities, the city of Mount Shasta provides sustainable transportation options that make it easy to live a healthy lifestyle. Residents and visitors of all ages, incomes and ability levels can easily get from home to their destination by walking, biking or rolling on a comfortable and connected active transportation network of sidewalks, bikeways and trails. And then we also put together the supporting goals and action statements that support that vision. The network should be safe and comfortable, it should be connected, it should be fun, and that's really tied about, you know, connecting to all the wonderful natural resources you have at your fingertips. Sustainable, economically viable, innovative and of course usable. Going into a little more depth about the engagement, we had a series of in-person engagement events. We had focus groups and interviews with a community bike ride, so talking to your existing bicyclists in town. We had a business leaders lunch. We interviewed parents and caregivers along with staff and faculty, administrators at various schools. And we also went to the senior center and had a focus group with older adults. We did mobile events, so pop-up events at the farmer's market, at Berryvale, Rays and concerts in the park. We had eight events and got to talk to a lot of people at those events. We had a community workshop in 2022 and 2023. The first event had over 20 participants. We also met with a technical advisory committee around six times. We had a robust online engagement, online presence as well. Of course, a lot of this engagement happened in the throes of COVID-19 and so we wanted to make sure we were respectful of people's health precautions. And so we had an online web portal, a project website with a virtual open house. Our first survey had 408 respondents. We had a public input map that had over 289 different comments attributed to that. We advertised it through the listserv, using emails, sidewalk decals or stickers that were around town at 13 locations. Image here you see is a yard sign. We had that put up at 20 different locations around town. We sent out postcards, over 4,000 postcards to every residential and business address within the project area. And we also paid for some social media ads to help let people know about this project. In phase two, we had another virtual open house where we shared early draft recommendations. We had an online community workshop. And then we also did interviews, additional interviews with System Middle School, Mount Shasta Community Resource Center, the Parks and Recreation District, Northern United Terror School, Downtown Enhancement Advisory Committee and Great Northern Services. And then the last phase, we had an open house downtown, another public workshop. We had 13 family cards filled out and 22 people attended to provide their feedback. Largely what we heard, and this is a summation, residents want to walk and bike much more frequently. They would like the option of driving less than they currently do. There are infrastructure gaps, however, that make it challenging to walk and bike for transportation purposes. They want better infrastructure along roadways. Safety is critical no matter how you're, you're getting around, people walking, driving, biking, they all want it to be safer. Business owners and community leaders are interested in the economic benefits of a more walkable, less congested downtown. There is some recognition that a changing climate makes these changes increasingly important. Families and parents want better connections to schools, parks, trailheads and other destinations. And generally, there is an appreciation for the planning process. People really enjoyed getting engaged and staying, staying involved. Some direct quotes, people walking and riding to and through our community makes it a more vibrant and healthy town. Second quote, we're a tourist town. We need to have elements that attract tourists and keep them wanting to return for more. If we had safe bike paths connecting featured areas and businesses, I'd be very proud to live in such a place. We conducted a pretty heavy amount of analysis on your current conditions. What are your opportunities? What are your challenges? We looked at your inventory of bike lanes, of your pedestrian infrastructure. So we went out and counted all the curb ramps and inventoried them. We looked at sidewalk conditions, where are there gaps, where there are cracks in the downtown core. We looked at crossing infrastructure, so where are the crosswalks marked, where are they not marked? We looked at all those different things and have those mapped. We looked at active trip potential. And so this is where we looked at people driving today, where they start their driving trips, where they end, and where's the hightest cluster of people making zero to one mile, you know, one mile trips, one to three mile trips, those very short trips that could be, you know, in good weather accommodated maybe by people walking or bicycling if they were able to do so. So we're trying to figure out where it makes sense to convert some of those trips to sustainable modes. We looked at safety and collision, where are people getting into crashes, whether they're walking, biking or driving, mapped those. We looked at the level of traffic stress, you know, how comfortable is it to, to walk and bike in town? Where are those connectivity, you know, interests to hospital, to schools, to trailheads? We looked at social vulnerability and risk. So where are low-income individuals, where are they clustered, making sure that they have access to bus stops, to destinations? We looked at hazard risk analysis, looking at points of egress from neighborhoods so that they can find, you know, so people can get out if there was a fire. And we also looked at transit inventory, mostly around your bus stops. Some of the key takeaways from this analysis, that there's a lot of opportunity in town. Sidewalk gaps are common outside of downtown, but a pretty robust network in town. Improving crossings will be key, especially over the railroad and over I-5. There seems to be a big barrier there and very few points to get across those, those main challenging locations. That's really what we heard a lot from folks, they want to be able to connect east and west and especially get down to Lake Siskiyou. Transit service has substantial gaps in the coverage and in the headways, you know, the time of day that people can use transit. And so there was a lot of discussion about how to improve that. So chapters five and six again are about the recommendations and then how they are prioritized. So for bikeways, areas of focus in the plan are on separated bikeways, on a network of bike boulevards, so using low-volume, low-speed residential streets to get people to their destinations, a desire for trail and trail studies, and then neighborhood connectors. On the walking side, areas of focus are how do you fill in the sidewalk gaps? How do you maintain sidewalk? Updating the land development regulations so that when new development happens, they're building sidewalks that are comfortable and meet regulations and then creating a sidewalk inventory asset management system so that you can keep track of the sidewalk you have. Intersections or crossings for those, we had some priority corridors and key intersections that were, that came up. One of them was the Mount Shasta Boulevard and Chestnut Street one-way street conversion. That's something that was discussed at council and planning commission in the past with the public. And the next step for that is recommendation for a public visioning study to advance that further than we can take it here in this citywide plan. Each recommendation, each infrastructure recommendation was scored and put into one of four buckets. And each project got a score based off of its benefits. How is it going to increase all those goals that we talked about, hit those goals? And then how feasible would it be for the city and its partners to achieve or implement the project? So projects that are high benefit and low cost or easy to implement are the ones that we've identified as high priority, ones that you can do maybe within your own budget and not needing to wait for grants to come along. Long-term projects are, are high need, but maybe require more engineering study, more public input and more external grant sources. There are opportunity projects that scored lower on benefits but easy to do. Maybe when a street's resurfaced, you can, you take that as an opportunity to attach these projects to larger city infrastructure projects. And then low priority ones are projects that are low benefit and maybe difficult to do. It's important that this plan has a wide wish list of projects, is a long-term plan, it's a blueprint. And so some of these projects may move up in priority over time. So we should make sure that they're captured here. We scored on these criteria, collision reduction, connectivity, comfort, environmental sustainability and community interest. And so for community interest, we, as part of that virtual open house, we did ask people to give us their priorities and that factored into our scoring as well. For feasibility, we looked at pavement markings, so anything that just requires paint received a high project readiness score. Studies as well were high project readiness, but things like moving curbs or things that had to do with signals or anything that would be removing, potentially removing parking or anything that was controversial, that's, that would be a lower project readiness, things that would need more public engagement. And then sort of city jurisdiction, projects that are located wholly within the city scored well, but anything that require acquisition or coordination with the county would mean the project's more complex and need more time. So in terms of sidewalk recommendations, you can see here in red, these are our recommendations to help extend your network on Mount Shasta Boulevard, north and south, on Lake Street and Lassim Lane are areas that I just wanted to mark out here. And then in terms of citywide, there is a policy that we have put into the plan about how to address that. As property, property owners change, you can use that as a time to address any deficient gaps or issues with sidewalk in front of their homes. So the priorities, again, Mount Shasta Boulevard, Lake Street, a gap on Rockefeller connecting to Shastis, Alma and Jesse Streets are important gaps to fill in. In terms of spot improvements or crossing improvements, we have 46 recommendations and these include new and upgraded crosswalk markings, crossing beacons like the one you see here, an example here on the bottom left, where a pedestrian would go, walk up to it and push a button to activate a beacon that would let motorists know that it's time to yield so that they can cross safely. Curb extensions and curb ramps to meet ADA requirements. So the three high priority locations from our scoring were at Mount Shasta and Smith Street. This is just upgrading a crosswalk to make it high visibility. That means making it that ladder style with advanced pedestrian yield markings and some signage. At Hattery Lane and the I-5 ramp, adding a high visibility crosswalk across the ramp. And then at Pine and Castle, adding a crosswalk on Castle. These are all, that can be accomplished with, that are easy and then high benefit. Terms of bikeway recommendations, there's a couple of different styles of bikeways. The first one is a class one or a shared-use path. Those are shown in green on this map. Those are your trails. Class two are bicycle lanes, where you just have paint separating the bicyclist from moving traffic. And then a class three are shown in, and those are blue. And then class three bike boulevards are shown in purple on this map. And those are, again, those streets that people can mix with traffic. And in most cases, we're recommending that the city explore traffic calming, so either speedhumps or many traffic circles or other ways that you can slow down the traffic so that people feel comfortable riding in the middle of the street. A new recommendation that's being adopted in large cities and small towns across the country is this idea of separated bikeway. This is an example here where you have the bike lane-- This is an example here where you have the bike lane hugging the curb. And so there's added protection and comfort for families, for kids, for maybe novice riders. And there would be a parking lane separating the bicyclist from moving traffic. So some sort of physical barrier here. And this is something that we've talked a lot about with staff, about how do you do this in a city that has significant snowfall and making sure that it's, it can accommodate your snow maintenance and snow removal. And so here we have a map of those core corridors, what we're calling the crosstown connector, which would connect schools across town along Lassen, Pine, Alma and Rockefeller up to Shastis Park. And then the Mount Shasta Boulevard, converting your bike lanes where they exist, swapping the parking lane. And this is something that could be accomplished with low-cost materials. Something else we want to call out is the connections north and south to connect Weed and Dunsmere by trail. And then in town, there's something that's been called the Midtown Greenway that would use on-street class three bike boulevards to connect north and south. And this would be a nice alternative to Mount Shasta Boulevard, connecting residents to in-town destinations. So in terms of priorities for the bikeway, the first one is the gateway to trails connector on Everett Memorial. A trail study in something what we're calling the Headwaters to Lake Trail. And this is a main spine that is consistent with the Parks and Rec District master plan. There's also the Great Shasta Rail Trail Study. So how do you convert an abandoned rail line that would connect all the way over to McLeod? The Midtown Greenway that I just mentioned. Lake Street Connector, expanding the bike lanes that exist on Lake Street, making it easier to get over I-5. The Mill Maple Bikeway, which would be an alternative to Mount Shasta Boulevard. This is a location that we've heard from residents quite a bit about cut through traffic and speeding traffic as a way to hopefully slow that down and make a connection there. A Pine Street Connector, connect to school. The Ream Avenue Bikeway, again, to help people connect closer to Lake Siskiyou. And then the Washington Drive Bikeway is a main corridor just off of the downtown core. We've got all of the bikeways mapped here in terms of high priority and long-term projects. And all of those have costs associated with them as well. In addition, we have neighborhood connectors. So to help punch through cul-de-sac neighborhoods so that there's another way for emergency vehicles to access neighborhoods, for people to escape during emergencies and also on day-to-day just as a way for people within neighborhoods to connect to each other, walking or biking. Trail studies and then programs and policy recommendations around, you know, working with partners to produce safe routes to school, education and encouragement events, wayfinding, open streets events, collecting data and reporting that back out to the public, transportation demand management programs, and then also seeking to become a bike-friendly community through recognition through the League of American Bicyclists. In terms of transit, there is a discussion in the plan about microtransit, about signing all the stops, posting the bus schedules at all stops and additional seating at stops in town and then providing lighting at the shopping center stop. So what's all this going to cost? In terms of priorities for the bikeways, there are 17 miles of high priority bikeways at a cost of just over $1 million in $20,000, $22,000. The full cost is $12 million. And we know that this is going to be a combination of county, state, federal dollars that have to come together. And in the plan, we itemize some of the grant opportunities we think that the city is competitive and seeking out. For sidewalks, there's two and a half miles of long-term priorities at around a cost of $1.1 million. And then spot improvements, those high priorities, there are three at a cost of just $22,000. And then the next 19, most important, are at about $1.2 million. So in terms of where the city can go to get the revenue for these improvements, new development, having developers or people pay for this as they redevelop large parcels, assessment districts, impact fees that can charge state and federal grant programs and then potential private funds. In the plan, in chapter six, we have a list of tasks that the city could then take on in partnership with, internally in partnership with others. And these are broken down with the responsibility and a timeline. So over the next five years, we recommend that the city create a walk, bike, ride implementation committee that meets quarterly basis to review opportunities and progress in the plan, submitting applications for planning grants so that you can move forward on a community redesign process if the council wants to move forward on that one-way street conversion on Mount Shasta Boulevard and Chestnut, just to look at more alternatives, not make a decision, but at least get more information about the impacts and what that would look like. And also the trail studies. Task three would be to, again, write more grants. This would be actually to amend a current project that funding has already been allocated for on Lake Street to add in class two bikeways and also to fund some sidewalk improvements on Lake Street. Submitting grant applications for intersections like the one at Mount Shasta, Chestnut, McLeod. We know that intersection, it's the most, most talked about intersection in town in terms of being difficult for people driving, walking and biking. So that's one that could be addressed. There's funding at the regional level, the county, to fund a walking and bicycling wayfinding program. Applying at state level for grants. Staff should then present a sidewalk infill policy proposal and update its sidewalk standards to city council for your review. We've asked for the city staff to present a business plan for installing metered parking in downtown, which we know there's a lot of pros and cons. One pro that we thought was important is just as another internal source to raise revenue to implement some of the priorities in this plan. And so this is a recommendation just for the business plan for council to have information to make an informed decision. Task nine is city staff should help develop the Siskiyou County Active Transportation Plan that's kicking off very soon. We want to make sure that the county plan and this study mirror each other. And then 10, staff will collaborate with local, public and charter schools and community organizations to improve bicycle and pedestrian safety by implementing education programs. So that's a hefty amount of tasks to accomplish over the next five years. But I think the momentum will really start to roll if you can, if you can knock out as many as possible of those first, first five. And then ongoing is looking at other grants, other regional sources of funding, applying to those and then keep on conditioning new development when it occurs to help you build out this plan. Ultimately, the plan should be updated every 10 years just to make sure that you keep it fresh and look for new opportunities. The appendices go into much more detail with segment by segment costs for each of the bikeways, sidewalks and crossings. All the costs and cost assumptions are included there. In terms of next steps, the public draft period opened on September 14th to review the draft plan. We met and brought this to the planning commission on September 27th and the TAC on the 28th. We closed the public comment period on the 9th. We're here tonight to collect feedback from you and also any public comments that come through. We'll work with staff to revise this and then bring that back on 24th for, for your action. My last slide tonight is that we received 27 comments and 24 letters slash emails to date. Generally, the comments kind of break down as such. There's a lot of support for the general vision, the plan vision. People want to have options for walking and biking more. We know it's not possible always, maybe in the wintertime for people that have different physical abilities, but people want the option where it's available. Filling in the sidewalk gaps comes up quite a bit with support along with safe routes to school and trail development. There's mixed interest about the roundabouts that have been recommended. We have three roundabouts recommended in the plan. And then there's a lot of mixed interest about the one-way street conversion. A lot of pros, a lot of people that have concerns. General concerns about snow removal and maintenance and how that ties into the bikeway design. Paid parking is the one that's got a lot of concern. And then impact on local taxes. Then we've heard also from planning commission and others that the plan is missing more emphasis on how older adults get around town, especially a lot of interest that we've received is in exploring an on-demand shuttle. And so that concludes my presentation. I appreciate the time to present and look forward to answering any clarifying questions or receiving your input.
Thank you very much. I'll open this up to council.
All right, I have a number of questions and comments. Jeff, you talked about the, the various tasks that you enumerated. And you mentioned, of course, that city council has expressed favorable views on the one-way streets in Mount Shasta Boulevard and Chestnut Street. Is that what you meant as part of task two, looking at that?
I'm off mute. Let me pull it up real quick just to make sure I'm on the same task. So for folks following along, this is on table 17.
You, you had the list of tasks.
Yeah. Task two says submit two applications to the Caltrans Sustainable Transportation Planning Grant Program, which will be opening this later this winter and close in the new year. And the one is what we're recommending is that you go after funding for a Mount Shasta Boulevard, Chestnut Street, streetscape, community redesign process. That will actually look at, all right, how is this actually going to operate? In the plan, we looked at some traffic operations and we concluded that it's not going to have a detrimental impact on traffic. There's a lot of other considerations that have to go forward. And we've not really done a lot of robust community engagement within that. So that's what we're recommending.
So bottom line is, is when I read through the, the plan, and this would be around page 134 of the agenda packet, page 113 of the plan itself, there were task one. You had task one, task two, task three and so on. And I'm wondering, when you talk about Mount Shasta Boulevard and Chestnut Street, if that is what you're referring to in task two? Because it wasn't clear to me the way it was described in the plan.
Yes, and we can clarify that further. That's, we're recommending the city move forward with a public process to look further at the one-way street conversion.
All right. And then in terms of the traffic circles or roundabouts, and those two different terms were used in the plan, is that part of task four that would be in that around page 113, 114 of the, of your plan?
The, the roundabout, it could be looked at, at that location. That's task four, which we submit, say submit H-SIP, which is a Highway Safety Improvement Program, application for improvements at Mount Shasta Boulevard, Chestnut Street, McLeod Avenue. That location has some immediate things that could be done that are low cost, which would be really tied into that grant program. And then what we would do is recommend looking at the design of a roundabout at that location. And that I think would need a little bit further funding, but that is one location for a roundabout. And the mini traffic circles or neighborhood, those are more traffic calming, kind of in residential areas. The roundabouts are just, we have three locations. That's one of them. And the other two are located at, I can tell you right now, at Mount Shasta Boulevard and Spring Hill Drive. That's number 54 ID, project ID 54. And then project ID nine at Old Stage Road and Deets Road. Again, additional study needed for those roundabouts.
Okay, I appreciate your clarifying because I wasn't clear when I read through the plan where those recommendations were. So maybe that was my oversight or maybe it could just be clarified in the plan itself in the final draft. And would you recommend or specific reference or inclusion in the plan as to routine snow plowing or maintenance of the bike lanes?
I think that some of the city staff will need to come back and look at the cost of that and look at your equipment can fit within. It depends, I think, on the separated bikeways, how you design them, if you can fit your current street sweeping vehicles down them and just use them to plow or if you even need specialized equipment. And that, at that point, it might be too cost prohibitive and mean that you might want to just convert those just to buffered bike lanes instead of doing separated bikeways. So that's something you have to go in the design phase to really look at that further.
Right.
Yeah. One thing we did mention in the plan itself is to make sure that there is a continuous edge. We know that the blade of the snowplow needs something consistent to brush up against for, to kind of know where it's going. And so there are options that you could do that. And we've kind of called those out in the plan. You know, ballards that come up every couple of feet, those would be plowed over and it would just be a tremendous cost to the city to keep replacing those. So we want to make sure that that's at least specified here in the master plan.
I've got a number of other comments if I can or, or questions. Page 19 of agenda, which would probably be page one of the acknowledgements of the report. I'm sure that Rhonda Monahan and John Kennedy Senior were pleased to be included as city council members, but you may want to make that correction in the, in the final draft.
We don't have the power to elevate them back. But yeah, I think they were originally involved and so we will, we will make sure that's updated with current council members, yes.
Page 34 of the agenda packet, which would be page 11 under fun. I'd like to see the phrase "and off-street" added to the sentence there. So it reads, "on-street and off-street active transportation facilities seamlessly connect to." Would that be consistent with?
Absolutely. Yeah, we can make that.
All right. And on page 35, 3C, which would be page 24 of the plan itself, I'd appreciate or would recommend that the language regarding Castle Street Plaza be somewhat amended to include reference to daylighting or possible daylighting of Castle Creek. Because that is something the city is at least considering. Are you with me?
What page was that council member, sorry?
Well, it's agenda packet, page 35. It would be plan 24, I'm sorry, 14.
14, okay.
3C.
3C, got it. Okay, we can.
So it might read evaluate, quote, evaluate the feasibility of building the Castle Street Plaza with daylighting of Castle Creek, blah, blah, blah. In terms of parking meters, which obviously is a very controversial issue, I think, in Mount Shasta. It came before city council several years ago. We decided not to do parking meters at that time. You have included estimated cost for a lot of other projects. Have no idea based upon the report at this time as to what potential costs would be for initial acquisition of parking meters and estimated maintenance of parking meters if we were to decide to go with that. Is that something that could be included? I know there's various types of parking meters.
Not, not within this plan. And that's why we're asking the, the recommendations to create an actual business plan to actually cost those out. That way you have better information. We're just not able to, to go into the level of detail you need to, I think, make a decision at this point.
All right. I mean, I think my preference would be, I'm leaning towards the elimination of section E on page 35 of the agenda packet, which would be page 14 of the plan for evaluation and feasibility of parking meters. But we'll see what other council members say about that when it ultimately comes before us in a couple of weeks. I won't go over the typos with you here because I can just send those to you and easy enough to correct.
Yes, thank you.
Page 46 of agenda packet, which is page 25. There's a map which is reversed. So the printing is backwards. That ought to be pretty easy to flip over in the final copy. Page 33 of the plan, page 54 of the agenda packet, virtual open house prioritization makes reference to Midtown Greenway. Part of the, and Midtown Greenway is shown in part of the plan as being high priority. Part of the, and Midtown Greenway is shown in part of the plan as being high priority recommendation, but it's not included on page 33 as one of the potential bike routes. So, would appreciate seeing that changed just for consistency purposes.
I'm sorry, following again. Page 33, what I have is the virtual open house prioritization results. So this is what the public has brought back to us. This is just reporting directly what the public has identified in that open house.
Well, there was a visual, if I recall, on page 33, or perhaps very close to it, but it didn't show the Midtown Greenway Trail as one of the proposed projects, although other parts of the proposals in the plan and recommendations does show that. I'm just wondering whether the language ought to be changed somewhat to make sure that we have consistency, internal consistency within the plan.
Yeah, I'm still not following. The pages that I see are Map 7, Map 8, and Map 9.
Okay.
And maybe it's just the way that we categorize the results of the open house. Ultimately, at the end of the day, council member, Midtown Greenway is recommended as a high priority project, and that is clearly stated when we get to later chapters.
Okay.
I've got my colleague Katie Celine here. Katie, are you tracking this as well? Maybe you were involved here and could shed some light.
Yeah, I was just going to chime in and say that I think how it's labeled is confusing. Like where it does say Map 8, recommended bike projects, but it's like recommended by the virtual open house, like, participants. So it's not, I think the terminology is confusing as to what this actually is, and we can clarify that.
Maybe that's what we need to do so that we can...
Yeah, like, I think this has like a standalone page, and how the map is labeled at the bottom, I think, is just unclear in terms of what is covered in this map.
Great. If it can be clarified, that'd be great.
Yeah.
That we can clarify.
Page 40 of the plan, which would be page 61 of the Agenda Packet, makes reference to truncated dome. What are truncated domes of curbs or related to curbs?
It's required by ADA to bring them up into compliance, and it's a tactile strip so that people, if you're using a cane, they can detect where the edge of the curb is to then enter the motorway. So we could define that or make a picture of that to include, so that we can clarify that, yep.
That'd be helpful for folks like me.
Yes.
Page 62 of the plan, Section 1, Bike Way Recommendation Principles. There's a sentence that reads, "Facilities that connect important community-identified destinations, e.g., schools, Lake Siskiyou, City Park, Shasta Park, downtown the Fish Hatchery, Trailheads, and businesses along Mount Shasta Boulevard." I'd like to see the plan add "and Chestnut Street" to the end of that sentence, if that can be done.
Absolutely, yes.
Page 75 of the plan, which we, page 96 of the Agenda Packet, the Mill or Berry bike paths look like they end before abutting the landing, and I'd like to see the plan actually have the bike path go all the way up to the landing, because I do anticipate that the city will intend to continue a bike path through the landing. Can that change?
We have that, but we have that as an off-street Class 1. And so it shows as a gap on that map, but maybe it just needs to be clarified. If you go to Map 24 on page 65, hopefully that clarifies that we do intend a fully continuous connection down to the landing.
If that could be somehow clarified in the plan.
Okay.
Appreciate it. All right, here's just a personal comment from me in terms of meandering sidewalks. This is page 88 of the plan, page 109 of the Agenda Packet, and 2B there says, "Meandering sidewalks shall not be built, except in cases where the topography and/or street alignment necessitates a meandering alignment." I've seen in some towns or cities meandering sidewalks that seem to add to the ambiance. We actually have something that we call Centennial Park here in town, which still needs to be developed further, but it seems to me it would be ideal for a meandering sidewalk. Is there a reason to prohibit or eliminate, bar, meandering sidewalks completely, or can we fudge that somewhat?
Yeah, the full recommendation is, "Meandering sidewalks shall not be built, except in cases where the topography and/or street alignment necessitates a meandering alignment." The final decision on construction of a meandering sidewalk will be at the discretion of the building inspector. It's become best practice to limit these, just because it adds length for people walking, and so, especially when they're kind of going back and forth like a waving line. I think a gentle meander back and forth is fine, but when you're adding, you know, when you're doubling the length that somebody has to walk unnecessarily, because it looks good, or it feels good in theory and practicality, sometimes people just need to get where they're going. So I think we could certainly soften this to give more discretion to city planning commission to kind of help make that case-by-case determination. I think as a practice, they're not being looked on so favorably anymore, but we want to give you a lot of flexibility.
Speaking for myself, only I would appreciate having some more flexibility as to that.
Understood.
And page 94 of the plan, page 115 of the Agenda Packet, makes reference to roundabout. I'm wondering if that should be traffic circle, or perhaps you can clarify for us and those of us who are either sitting in the audience or listening in, the difference between roundabouts and traffic circles.
Certainly. What page were you, did you mention?
Page 94 of the plan, page 115 of the Agenda Packet.
All right, this one is, the first one, number nine, ID number nine, at Old Stage and Dietz Road. Additional study required for potential roundabouts or curb radius reduction, which would just be narrowing the intersection there. So a roundabout is really at the design of slowing down traffic at major intersections. It's to improve the safety of vehicles. It reduces, it eliminates head-on collisions and side swipe collisions, and also makes it easier for people to cross at those locations without the addition of a signal. And so there is some additional cost, of course, with the design and construction of these roundabouts. People will be moving around a central, you know, a central barrier in the middle. They move around in a clockwise, a counterclockwise fashion, and it's being adopted in lots of small towns across the state and across the country. Truckee, I think, has done this pretty well as good examples in kind of mountain town areas. And then the difference between that and kind of a neighborhood application, a mini-traffic circle, would be at a four-way stop, or maybe replacing a four-way stop with a version of that where people don't need to make a full, complete stop, they just yield around that. And so it's a traffic calming measure at kind of a more neighborhood residential level, whereas your roundabouts are more at your arterials and collector streets, kind of larger streets, larger intersections.
Okay, thank you. I'm getting close to the end here. Bike path recommended on Pine Street. There's been some suggestion, and I think I also would be supportive of seeing a bike path on Cedar Street, which is a quieter residential street that's parallel to Pine Street. Is that something that Alta might consider recommending in the plan?
Yes, council member, that's feedback we received from the Technical Advisor Committee, and it's something that we are going to be considering in terms of the next round of revisions. I think it's good. I think it makes sense.
And in terms of high priority, long-term, well, yeah, high priority, long-term, and low priority, what I understand is long-term really is still high priority, but the sort of thing that's going to take time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
I would think and would recommend that perhaps the report could be clarified, or the plan could be clarified, to make reference to higher priority, long-term, because that way it would be somewhat clearer to folks who may be reading the plan for the first time or reading it in the future.
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. High priority, short-term, high priority, long-term. And it's, you know, then it's kind of up to the city as opportunities arise, and you get the funding you need, you can decide how quickly to move forward.
So, I've got some other questions, but let me just ask one final one at this point. Your plan, or the proposed city plan, is a 10-year plan. Do you think it is feasible with concerted effort that everything that is proposed in the plan, in fact, could be adopted within, or could be accomplished within the next 10 years, provided that we obtained funding?
I think in terms of staff capacity to deliver, along with just, you know, it's both sides. It's getting the funding and then also having the staff to deliver the projects. I think your high priority projects stand a good likelihood. We try to, you know, mark the high priority in terms of a dollar figure, and number of projects is something that over 10 years, I think, is realistic. I think it would be a stretch on the other ones. We wanted to have them there so that you could move and take advantage of opportunities, but I think it's the high priority ones that have the highest likelihood of being achieved over the next 10 years.
All right. So a number of these projects that are listed as low priority, you would anticipate would carry over to the second 10-year phase, or maybe even the third year, third...
Correct. And so if there are low priority projects that we need to elevate, I think this is a great time to get that feedback from council members.
I see. All right, well, I'm going to pass for now. Thank you.
What else?
Tim asked every single question I had. Thank you.
Chair, I don't know if I should say this now or later. My worries regarding, what do you call the bike paths where there's a curb, you know, street curb, and then a dedicated or protected bike lane? Is that what you call a protected bike lane?
Separated bikeway.
Separated bikeway. That, and you want those on Mount Shasta Boulevard downtown?
Mount Shasta Boulevard and on the crosstown connector, Lass and Pine, Alma, Chesteese.
All right, well, that's going to require some very thorough investigation. I'm not sure I'm keen on that. Not keen at all on the going to parking meters either, for various reasons. I think that could be, I mean, it could be studied, but it could be deleterious to the business environment. And outside of that, I generally like all the other ideas put forth in the plan. I just wanted to comment that a lot of the ideas have been on the drawing boards for decades, and so, again, it comes down to fund finding, as in getting grants and possibly setting up an assessment district. But, yeah, that's the tough part. Although, the total money, as I think, mentioned in this report, for bikeways and sidewalks seem lower than the one from 2010. I'll have to go back and look at that, which I found surprising. So, yeah, I like the plan generally, and just with a couple reservations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, and let's open up to public comment, which is why I think everyone's here tonight.
I'm 24 years old. I'm riding my bike every day.
Can you state your name and where you live, please?
And if you could do something for me, you could maybe repair the existing bike trails on Mount Shasta Boulevard and going down Lake Street, because it is very dangerous. There are potholes, there are man covers, manhole covers, and such things. So if that could be a priority, that would be really nice, because I'm not going to live as long as... Your plan sounds fantastic, and it's great for the future, but I'm riding my bike right now, and I don't want to fall down and break my neck. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Anna Lisa Hartwell, and I live about five miles north of town, but this is my town, and I come into town daily. And right now, car is the only way. In the coming age of electric bikes, more and more, I'm envisioning possibly riding in on North Old Stage, but there's so much speed and traffic that we need a bike lane there if that's going to happen. And there's a lot of people that live up that way, a lot, who relate to our town here. This is an amazing plan. The detail is actually kind of mind-boggling on some of the things, and so I have to appreciate Alta for all they've done. But when it comes to looking at the needs of older people in this town, if they just held one meeting at the senior center, I never even heard about it. They should be going at least to Alta Vista and to Esquitan and holding meetings there. They should be talking to other people. I like the idea of a local transit. The stage line is fairly useless to most people, but I'd like to see one that didn't just go to Alta Vista and Esquitan. I'd like to see it circulate throughout the town, because if someone still has to walk a long distance to get to the bus stop, then it's not very useful. I'm trying to talk fast here. Pardon me for... Parking meters, no, I don't think that's going to fly. I don't think it's going to be very appealing to our visitors, who are our lifeblood here. One-way streets, I just think we don't need them, and it's just going to be a further complication. The comparing of our city to some of the other cities they listed in the plan, it's like, those cities are all quite a bit bigger than we are. We're kind of unique in a lot of ways, and so I don't know if there's really any other towns you can compare us to. So some of the things that were suggested for those towns probably just aren't going to fly here. Let's see. Gee, I think I've raced through most of what I was going to say. I want to thank you all.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Susan. I live in Mount Shasta, and I'm new to your town, and I think some of these proposals are very big-city-ish. You are very small. I would like to know statistically if roundabouts really are less dangerous. I find them to be more dangerous. Will you have a one-lane or a two-lane roundabout? And then you have to figure, do I get off at Exit 1, Exit 2, Exit 3? And then you're, and then someone walks out in that pathway? No way. I think roundabouts for the small city doesn't work. Meters? No way. Ventura County, I've lived in, I've lived in... going to hire the person to come fix that meter, and give you the ticket, so that you can get out and go where you need to go? This is too small of a town for meters. Totally against it. And am very much for putting a lot of effort into good walkways and bikeways. I think this town really needs road repair, by all means. So I think that's it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
And that was a great, detailed report, but a little intense.
Road repair?
Hi, I'm Darryl Kennedy. I live on McLeod Avenue, and I want to heartily echo the comments about a need for road repair. And I would suggest, starting with McLeod Avenue. That one is one of the worst in the, in the whole town. I also agree that roundabouts, I hate them. Trying to get on them and off them is just a huge challenge. I was just in Astoria, Oregon, last week, and they have a roundabout coming into town, two-lane, and it's just, you get it stuck in the middle. Getting out is darn near impossible to do. It's just, they're, they're not feasible and not necessary in a town this size. Parking meters, it's more likely to kill tourism, and force people to go someplace else than it is to raise revenue, or whatever it's intended to do. And we're just not that big that we need one-way streets through downtown. I think that it's trying to fix a problem that really doesn't exist. Anything else? No. Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I will say, you know, I, I have been known to walk and ride a bike on occasion, and I have no, you know, objection to making some more sidewalks and some bike trails. That's, that would be a good thing.
Thank you. Anyone else in person?
Mike in Eville, longtime resident of Mount Shasta. Here primarily to see the data, and understand how the civil process is being, you know, perceived throughout the community, as well as asks and questions. Big city, for sure. This is CRE. This is Commercial Real Estate Data Analytics. And that's what they've done. A great job of presenting material that we can then use as a city for grants and business plans. I get it. The people in general have already known most of this, right? They gave us a here's what with all the data. We all know about the bike rides from here to there, and how to get there safely, kind of. The difference, that will make the difference in lives, is the pothole fixing. Marking out some lines, figuring out some slowing down somehow, at some places. Guilty as charged. We all speed a little fast when we're running late, every last one of us. I think. But the reality is, spending more money on more studies isn't necessarily the best use of the funds, when there are days, and lives, and people, and sidewalks that can be adjusted. My perspective. I really like the community, and so I appreciate what you're doing. And I think there needs to be more people here talking about this. So, making a little jab at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone online, Kathy?
Yes. Our first speaker online will be Johanna.
Hi, Johanna. You have three minutes.
Hi there. So, good evening. My first commentary, I sent you a letter, which hopefully all have a chance to read. And it's not, I'll summarize some of it right now. But I wanted to add, for the comments from the workshop that came up earlier, for that one page, which just Alta was going to summarize, I think maybe you might want to also highlight comments from the other people who've sent letters, and then maybe include on the website, because not everybody could attend that one meeting, and so it might be more inclusive to have a broader range of public input in the report. And so you could actually put the, those comments on the website. I agree with the potholes, and having current improvements. We have a lot of issues on that. I, you know, I put in several things. A lot of them have been said in the report, like safety, convenience. I'm against the meters. I think we will kill tourism. I don't think businesses will like it either. I do think free public transit for all, to have a downtown route, that's something that circulates every 15 minutes, and then have some that are longer stretches. I agree with, I gave a list of, I looked at the census from 2010, and there are several cities that are much smaller that we can compare to. On the separated bike lanes, which I mentioned early on, that I saw in Seattle, that I think are really good, I do not want to see those curves, because I don't think that would be good. I think that would be extra maintenance. I think just having separated bike lanes is good, and then in the winter, it's not an issue. So I wonder if there's a compromise that can be done on that. Want to make sure that lights and flashing lights are kept to a minimum, because it's visually disturbing at night, and it impacts wildlife. And we have many wetlands here in Mount Shasta. I prefer mostly painted bike lanes. And I'd like to mention ticketing speed boxes to slow traffic. I don't think speed bumps will help, because it'll impede snow removal. And e-bikes, I think we need to be really careful, and make them safer. And so I think the protected bike lanes might help with the e-bikes and accidents with cars, because they go much faster than a bike, and are often misinterpreted as a regular bike. Anyway, I have various different comments with pages listed on my letter, page 5, 53, 45, with infrastructure foundation, the microwave, and service towers, and had some questions about that. So I'm hoping maybe someone can help with that. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Vicki Gold. Hello, Vicki. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Vicki Gold, Mount Shasta. First of all, I'd like to thank the group that did the study. Very, very impressive, and we can use this for many things in the future. Today, I did a survey while I was working, and I asked everybody who came in how they felt about it. And virtually, only one person said, "Well, if they need the money, but I don't really like it." Everybody is against parking meters. Ashland has none. Eugene put them in, and it was a boon for Springfield. People will park on the side streets, in front of homes, which is very inconvenient for the local renters and homeowners. Parking meters are unsightly. They're heavy metal. They're not in sync with our small mountain village beauty. Think of pages, people parking right outside to make a $0.10 copy, having to put a quarter in. So, as I said in my letter, we are not Ben, Southlake, Tahoe, San Francisco, Beverly Hills, or a large tourist town. Please reject element eight, ask eight. Roundabouts, if they're safe and affordable, which I don't think they are, as far as affordability, I have nothing against that. I love the concept of, you know, repairing all of the bubbles, and sidewalks, and maintenance. One-way streets, people in Ashland whom I know don't like them, nor do the visitors. They have to spend more gas going round and round, because they're not familiar with the area. The most important concept is free or nominal $1 fare on a shuttle operating regularly. Surely, grants are available for electric small vans or shuttles. They could be really cute. You could have little artists decorate them. So it would be public art. There could be open air for warm seasons, closed regular vans for winter, and they could be state-of-the-art electric vehicles. Of course, it would require a parking area. And many of us drive three miles to town to shop. Part of the 12-man can be used for new parking areas and shuttles. This would provide jobs, and they could travel from various schools, south to the southern businesses in the Landing, and Chestasee Park, the museum, another to the resort, and north to City Park. It's just a concept, but I think you'd have widespread support if you would enhance the local transportation, of which there is none. And of course, Alta Vista and Escatton. So, I'm, I would be delighted to see safer crosswalks and bicycle paths, but not at the expense of the shuttle. The shuttle needs to be a priority, and it could be extremely catchy, and beautiful, and attract people. Also, the planning commission commented about Highway 89, and I wonder if that was going to be addressed. I hope you've all looked at those comments. They were very important, and I think that is an extremely important intersection that is not safe and needs addressing, with Caltrans, of course. So, I just wanted to say thank you for looking at this. I hope you will reject the paid parking and the one-way streets. They're not necessary. I liked what Annalisa said. I like what Darryl Kennedy said. And I like what Jerry Metz said, that this is a, you know, a solution for a problem that doesn't exist. And it's very expensive. So I would like to see those not a priority item at all. And I'd like to hear your comments about those. We didn't hear anything, except one person said he was all for parking meters at the planning commission, and wished that they were already in place. Somebody else said, "Well, we could have free passes for the meters, for the locals." But I think, honestly...
Okay, Vicki. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Betty Krieger.
Okay, Betty, you have three minutes.
Thank you. Well, at the risk of sounding like a broken record, I agree with everything that Vicki said, and pretty much everything everybody else said. So I will just go over a couple of points. One thing I think is, is really important, and other people have brought this up, that it's really a priority, and that is fixing the streets. Pine Street is allegedly supposed to be fixed, and you still get this bumpity-bumpity bump when you go over places where they dug and put in the water pipes. So, in my mind, I think fixing the streets is definitely a high priority. I'm totally against the roundabouts. I just don't see the need for them. As has been said, it's a solution without a problem. I, I don't see how that is going to benefit the town. Definitely a no-on parking, for all the reasons previously stated. It has been suggested a 20 mile-per-hour in Mount Shasta speed limit. However, as I mentioned at the planning commission, 20 miles an hour in the whole town? That's ridiculous. I came home from Redding today, and I was driving 25 miles an hour on South Mount Shasta Boulevard, and it was just like I was crawling. I was exhausted from having been gone all day. And it, I can't imagine 20 miles an hour, reducing it. Maybe downtown, for the two blocks between Chestnut and Alma, would, might be a good idea. But I just don't see how that's going to really make a difference. Flashing lights at crosswalks is a good idea. As I said, I was in Redding today, and I came upon a crosswalk. There were people, a couple of people standing there, and the light flashed. I kind of missed it. But that's a good thing to alert drivers that, that people are entering the crosswalk. I have suggested for years that something like that be put in front of Ace Hardware on Mount Shasta Boulevard, because the way people park, it's, I always drive really slow and look both ways. But the way that people park right up to the crosswalk, next to Ace Hardware, you can't see them when they're trying to cross the street. The transportation, I think that's a great idea, too. So, those are my comments. And I hope, I really hope that you will not approve the parking, and not approve the roundabout. Thanks again.
Okay, Betty. Okay. No more hands are raised. Any last call for comments? All right. We will close public comment, and bring it back to council for clarifying note for discussion.
Making a comment as to why we have this plan being prepared for the city, just as we have a general plan that sets forth our intent for the next 10 or 20 years, this plan helps our, not only our future planning, but it can also be one of the bases on which the city can rely to seek funding from federal government, from state government, from private foundations, showing, yes, we have a plan. This is why we need money to make improvements to our city, to the sidewalks, to create bike paths, trails, et cetera. So, it's not just because we got some grant money, and we wanted to come up with a plan. The plan actually is fundamental to what comes next. And I think that Alta has, in, in general, done an excellent job in putting together the draft plan, incorporating the, the public's comments, and the city's vision into it.
So, do we want to ask Alta to remove anything that's been talked about tonight? So, obviously, the parking meter issue, or idea, would come to mind first and foremost. I don't have a problem, although several others do, with the one-way street analysis going forward. And likewise, with the roundabouts, especially if we can get grants to, to, to build those. So, I don't see those having to be removed from this plan at this point. I just have, I just, I'm a little worried about those protected bike lanes downtown. Yeah, those, there is some, I have to look at that a little more closely. But everything that's in the plan doesn't necessarily mean it will come to fruition. And it's more of a guiding tool for transportation, active transportation, particularly development going, going forward. So, by adopting this, we're not saying we're going to do everything in the plan to a T. We can alter some of the components. We can eliminate some of the components as we go along. It's, it's not as if we're dedicating ourselves to the complete bringing about of every element of the plan. So, I don't, I don't really have a problem adopting it as-is, with the possible exception of the parking meters. Possible exception of eliminating the parking meters, if that's appropriate.
And on page 35 of the agenda packet E, which addresses the, it says, "evaluate the feasibility of parking meters in downtown Mount Shasta to promote walking and biking, and raise funds for investing in transportation infrastructure," unquote, I wrote, "eliminate." But I'm open to considering it, depending upon how other city council members feel.
You wrote eliminate next to that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, further commentary. Everyone needs to keep in mind that this plan, and which is, I guess, part of the overall circulation plan, or is the circulation, but it looks to me like it's specialized, is to promote other ways of getting around town outside of personal automobiles. And, and that brings out really clearly to me, from the beginning to the end of, of this plan, it's a, an effort to, and it's a general effort in our state, and possibly the country, but certainly in our state, to, to improve lifestyles, quality of life in cities, small and large, medium, et cetera, by promoting active transportation. And so, things like the parking meters is a, is an attempt to get people to not, you know, to think about another way of going downtown, instead of taking their car. But the reality is, I think it'd be detrimental to business conditions. So I, I think it should be avoided entirely.
I was on the no parking meters before I got to the meeting. So, I'm not, I'm not surprised everybody else is against it as well. That is not, not a good idea, in my opinion. And I'm all for the one-way streets. I have been since 2000.
I'm all for the one-way streets. I have been since 2012 when I first ever ran for city council. I'm all for roundabouts. I know how to drive and get off the road. They're not that hard. You just move over and turn. It's real easy to do. They're all over Reno. Drive around there, they're fine. But just my concern with Chestnut is businesses like myself, we don't have alleyway access with deliveries compared to Main Street. So, whatever the one-way situation ends up being, I just want to make sure delivery trucks for myself, Shasta Super, Crave, and anybody else on Chestnut that way, we're not impacting traffic any more than we already are with two lanes kind of being half-blocked just to get our deliveries, because like I said, we don't have an alleyway to use, same as Main Street. But that being said, I'm still for the one-way streets. We can make it work. It's okay.
Okay, well, since this is more of a review and no action to take, I hope, Jeff, that the comments you heard tonight will help you with the next phase of this, and we will look forward to hearing what you have at our next meeting and hopefully moving forward from there. So, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Okay, and number nine, reports outside meetings. We don't have any. Number 10, future agenda items and meetings appearing on the agenda within 60 to 90 days. A, council goals workshop, 10/17/22. B at 3. Thank you very much. B, adoption of the walk-bike-ride mobility plan, 10/24/22. C, discussion and possible actions, sidewalk maintenance responsibility and options to be determined. D, short-term rental ordinance to be determined. Sure.
So, city manager, how do you feel about the possibility of the short-term rental ordinance being complete by, say, yeah, the moratorium deadline of February? Do you feel confident or moderately confident it will be, you know, get to us from planning?
It's going to be tight. The, my concern is that, it's not really my concern, and it really comes down to, well, the planning commission has had three bites at the apple on this, and what are they going to do this time? Are they, you know, are those, you know, the last few comments that have been incorporated, is that going to be enough, or are they going to find new things to suggest? If we get it passed through the planning commission, it's a good possibility.
And they have a meeting this month, or is it?
We need to get it agendized. And we've got TRC, our planning consultants, on that to get it agendized.
Okay.
Discussion and possible action, affordable housing ordinance to be determined. F, affordable, oh, sorry, approval of RFP to seat companies specializing in tax-sharing agreements to be determined. G, resolution approving annexation of various properties to be determined. And H, letter of support for Prop 64 grant application to be determined. And future agenda items over 90 days, general plan workshops and discussion and possible action of review of chapter 13.95, extraction and exportation of groundwater from the city of Mount Shasta. Any additions?
Not an addition, but what I would suggest, if other council members are agreeable, is that in advance of the city council goals workshop on October 17th, which is next week, that we submit to staff our thoughts or written proposals so that we can not discuss them in advance of the meeting, but at least I maybe be more efficient or productive. How do you all feel about that?
Another way of saying that is for maybe each of us to send our top two priorities to Kathy by...
Whatever number, but just...
By Thursday?
That would be...
No, I think you should have a limit.
Yeah.
Two, three, four, five.
Well, this is to, this is to focus in and get some short-term results, so I would say two for now, and then we can expand for the next 90 days after.
Well, whether it's two, or three, or five, it would certainly help us, I think, focus. Two may, I think, two may be too few, but can we compromise at three?
Well, we're starting at three because we're on a time crunch, so keeping it, that's 10, 10 amongst the five of us already. Just, you know, if we got time, then we could talk more, but I think two is enough.
Actually, we may only have two among the five of us, if we all come up with the same idea.
I haven't done it.
Why don't you bring three, and we can bring two?
All right, well, and the plan is to submit them to Kathy by Thursday. Great.
Anyone else? Adjourned.